Meeting's on, it's being recorded. All right, good evening, everybody. It is now, what time it is? Seven thirty-five. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Plan and Development Subcommittee and Town Council, Wednesday, January fourth, Fourth, twenty twenty-three, at seven forty-five, here in the Veterans Room. Roll call, Council Lazlo excused. Sometimes it's just don't ask questions.
Was it a good excuse? No.
Is it ever? All right. Council Dow?
Right.
Catherine?
Here.
DeeDee?
Present.
Council Adams. All right, we have a quorum. Number two, consider and accept Plan and Development meeting minutes of November twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two. Need a first and second, please.
Second.
Discussion. You guys are all set with that one? All good? All those in favor? Opposed? Four zero. Three, consider and accept Plan and Development meeting minutes of December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Need a first and second, please? Come on.
I'll second.
Oh, you can vote on it. It's okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed? Four. Number four, discuss review Town Manager's appointment of Joseph Diaz to Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June three, twenty-twenty-five, pending completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion. Come on.
Okay, second.
Discussion. At this point in time, I'll start with Ms. Dean. I don't see the Town Manager here.
Yeah, sure. I actually would leave it to you if you would like.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Diaz approached me, and we posted on Facebook some openings for the committees. He took advantage of it. I think we started talking in the first first week of December.
Yep.
We were hitting and missing, finally got in contact, sent, very professional, sent his resume right to me. It was great, and I really appreciate it, and thank you for all the hard work that you do doing volunteering for the town. Then I pawned him off over on Ms. Dean and had a conversation with Ms. Dean. She recommended sending it to the Town Manager. I'm not sure if the Town Manager ever got a chance. Did you ever get a phone call from the team?
I spoke to Hannah, I'm sure what her role is, but...
Okay. All right. Highly qualified individual, and, you know, how many does this give you now? You've started with really nothing.
Six.
Number six, out of seven, so we appreciate it, and we, I know she, Ms. Dean is trying to get them back up and running, and I think it's vital to our community, especially it's been dead for
A while.
For quite a while, so, thank you. I'll leave it up to a discussion on this. Questions?
I just want to thank you for coming forward. I really appreciate it. I love what you wrote in here.
Oh, excellent. No, thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Could I ask you for the public's interest for anybody who's watching? Would you want to just give a highlight of what you liked about it, or would you want to give a highlight of your background?
Yeah, I can give a highlight of my background there, no problem. Me too.
No, no, you can sit right there if you want. It doesn't make us strong reporters, so I don't have to remember what we talked about.
All right, so Joe Diaz, again, thirty-one years old, worked at Southbridge for the last twelve years. Originally from Puerto Rico, was born there, moved over to Flores, spent most of my life there, and migrated up here to Southbridge. And currently reside with my wife, Candace, as well as my son, eleven-month-years-old, his name is Kai. Currently work at Flexon. I've been there going on nine years in April, in the sales support manager role, and I responsible for managing the Latin American territories and working with numerous sales reps to kind of take a look at our growth strategies there and establish ourselves in each country. Primarily in Mexico right now, we're focused on, because that's where we're seeing the majority of growth. Not sure how familiar you all with Flexon, but we're a manufacturer of adhesive labels and plastic films. So essentially there, I'm responsible for a number of responsibilities, anywhere ranging from project management, anywhere from sales support, technical support as well. Taking a look at our internal processes and make sure that we're as efficient as we can be to support our sales reps and our customer base as well. My background is mainly in business management and leadership, have a bachelor's degree from Capella University, and that's essentially it.
Well, it's good.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Very.
Yes.
So all those in favor? Opposed? Four zero. So what will happen is Monday, we'll vote to confirm you as a Town Council. And then Hannah will reach out to you to do an ethics training and get that done before you can vote on anything, and that's the way it goes. Now, you're more than welcome to come to the Town Council meeting. Usually we have the appointees, we usually put them up front as far as the agenda is concerned, so, you know, if you'd like, but I think there's, what, five of us in here already?
Does that mean you're as well?
No, it'll be right upstairs in the dais. So if you walk right up the stairs as you came in, right there. Now, it starts at seven, but I'd be safe to say I'm always wrong. Seven fifteen. But expect eight fifteen. All right, gotta go. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. All right.
Chair.
Ma'am.
For the next two items, I would, I wonder if the Subcommittee wouldn't be willing to postpone them until the end of the agenda?
Absolutely.
In the hopes that Eric could pop in after his planning for meeting?
Postpone, postpone? Until the end? What's that?
I say you don't have to, you don't have to go forward, or she can just take the number.
Okay, you do that. Just don't want anybody coming back after me. All right, we'll take it to Agenda number seven. Discuss review entering into an agreement with either Childscapes or M.E. O'Brien and Sons Incorporated for Playground Equipment and Surfacing of McCann Fields for up to one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars using Operational Service Division, RSD, contract, FAC one oh four, funded with the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities or the Park Grant. Entertain a motion to the Town Council to approve and authorize Town Manager to sign all related papers. Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Sure, for the public, I know you probably have already read the memo, but just states the town Southbridge has funds enough to purchase the equipment and the surfacing to be located where the old handball court is. Thanks to our low bid from Jam Corporation. This expanded scope allows us to purchase a larger piece of equipment and upgrade the swing to what we were hoping, but we weren't sure we would be able to afford. Both items are universally accessible. In the interest of time, we're seeking approval to allow it enter into the agreement and order the equipment as early as possible because Jam will be coming in in the spring to do that work right in front of the handball court with fencing and curving. We want to get the equipment in in advance of them doing the curving because we don't want to risk damaging their work. Then, if we were to, if we were to wait any longer, there's a chance because of supply chain issues, just because of the level of construction happening, discretionary funds out there, that these playground sets can take a little longer to get to us. So I'm asking for approval. I'm hoping that the M.E. O'Brien quote is the one we go with because they have the speed control on their rotation equipment that I would feel safer having down there. And we're waiting because the vendors were, you know, in vacation holiday schedule, and we're still waiting for those final numbers back.
One thing I noticed was, I know you have the links to them. We probably should have had in the packet. I don't think we, I mean, we looked, take a look at them, but it's, I'm just saying maybe we should have hard copies for the rest of the councils.
Can you provide that for Hannah for the Town Council?
If you don't mind. Thank you, ma'am. Discussion. Council Marquetti?
Well, once again, funding for McCann Field. No money for upgrades at Morris Street or any other park. I believe the playground equipment was funded in two thousand and nineteen, and it is installed and still there. And I just was looking at previous funding at McCann and going over it year after year after year. I come up to over a million dollars that we spent on McCann since at least two thousand and nineteen. I may have missed a few things, but that's about what I've come up with. And at the same period of time, the amount of money spent up at Morris Street is zero. So I'm just wondering, when are we going to get some work done at Morris Street? Morris Street has playground equipment as well. Playground equipment has never been replaced, and yet the playground equipment at McCann was replaced. The handball court, that was done in twenty twenty-one, and I mean, a lot of people have wanted that. So I just would like to know, I would like to see some funding at Morris Street. I keep asking for it every year. I seem to get a lot of lip service over it. That we're going to do something at Morris Street. But yet it all seems to be going to one park.
Fair question. Ms. Dean?
It was voted, or it was agreed to through public hearing process for the CDBG fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, that the next step for Morris Street is to do the open space and, fund the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which covers all of our open spaces with an add-on within the Open Space and Recreation Plan to focus on the best use for Morris Street, including the building. Because for us to be able to make an educated decision about the next best priorities, we need a big picture plan first. I think the Town Council had decided that. With regards to the handball court, it's not a regulation, so it was the ordinances that had advocated for replacing the old handball court that's there with new handball courts. That's part of this park grant. The reason we're including these playground upgrades is because this is all within a park grant to fund McCann Fields upgrades. So it can't be, you know, redirected towards other parks.
It can't be redirected?
Correct.
Oh, it can't be?
It's a, if I may through you, Chair.
Sir, go ahead.
This is, the award was for McCann Fields Capella Park upgrades to include new handball courts, new skate park, ADA path, and then if, and an ADA swing, and if able, park playground equipment for ages five to twelve. The playground equipment that was put in in two thousand and nineteen was for younger age, the toddler to five, and so this will complement that.
So I caveat off that too as well. So I've gone down multiple times to the Community Center, Senior Center, trying to find out what's actually happening over there. And I know that, I know that Michael that's over there, Recreation Director, is knocking out the park. He's also brought a few things to ARPA. But ARPA has kind of turned that down because we don't have any type of plan to even happen with that, that whole area from the building to the park itself. And I think it would be foolish of us to start putting piecemeal things together and all of a sudden we find out we have a drainage issue, which we do over at Morris. We have old equipment, obviously. We have an issue at the Community Center with HVAC. We also have an issue with the ceiling itself or the roof itself. And we've got quite a few things that needs to happen over there. And I think if we get this plan together and start putting that money towards that while maintaining McCann at the same time, I think we're in a win-win situation. I just hate to see us spend money and then say, no, we're just kidding, we're not going to take that outside equipment and pull, tear it back up a few years later. So that's the way I look at it, but I also understand the issues that Council Marquetti has brought up. I respect that. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, wait, actually, sorry. We have to choose between, all those in favor of, I'll add this in there. Yeah.
Can I clarify? The motion is for you to allow us to choose.
Oh, for you to choose?
Yeah, we're just reading for the final amounts and the descriptions of the projects. So you're voting to literally allow us to choose either M.E. O'Brien or Childscapes depending on what comes back?
Okay, very well, very well. Thank you. Thank you. I should have looked a little closer. All those in favor? Opposed? Four zero.
All right. Number eight, discuss review entering into an agreement with Charlton Fence to replace McCann Fields' practice field fencing for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Entertain a motion to the Town Council for approval and to authorize the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork.
Come on.
Dean?
I'll second.
You got it. Ms. Dean?
Yes, so to Council Marquetti's comment about he sees almost a million dollars in spending, we have around seven hundred thousand dollars committed for Capella Park and McCann Fields through the park grant. The CDBG fiscal year twenty for eighty thousand to replace this fencing that we're about to approve to do some backstop netting. And we're hoping to do the scoreboard, but in the end we can't afford it, and it's determined that it's the least priority. Fiscal year twenty-one, we're paying for lighting and security because that's something that couldn't be funded through the park grant, and that'll be up the ADA path, so all encompassing around seven hundred thousand dollars.
Questions? Discussion? Council Marquetti and then Francine. Francine?
I just, the fencing that is talked about at that field, because I'm around the corner from it, is it going to be commercial-grade fencing and not residential plastic crap? Sorry.
Ms. Dean?
If I may through you, we've been grateful for BSC Group, who we hired for the park grant to help us with these quotes and bids for additional equipment. So they were the ones to help ensure we got the right gauge aluminum fencing and the correct number of posts to ensure the backstop versus the remainder of the field. You know, the gates were considered, et cetera. So I feel like we're in good hands, and I feel like our quote is for no more than what we need, but making sure that we have, we have a stronger gauge at the backstop fencing, a lesser gauge around the field, or not when you say lesser, but just, you know, not as strong a gauge around the field because this is just a, a practice field. But it's durable, and it should last probably a third of ours.
Francine, go ahead, yeah.
Third of ours, don't quote me.
You good with that?
Well, the fencing there has been there since I've been a kid, and it's steel grade, not aluminum. So it's the grade of the fencing is the quality. I have an issue with it.
Yeah, yeah, so not aluminum, excuse me. So let me look at my quote.
Galvanized steel.
Okay, thank you for correcting me.
So it's not, sorry.
Go ahead, Francine, yeah.
It's not aluminum in the quote, it's steel grade in the RFP or the quote, or whatever you want to call it. I mean, you guys got rid of the slide. I know it was steel, but then there's sixty years.
What is the industry standard? Steel?
Steel.
Galvanized steel.
Galvanized steel, correct, yeah.
That's what it says here.
Yes, galvanized schedule forty pipe. Two-by-six gauge chain link. It doesn't say aluminum versus galvanized steel. Can I presume that it's galvanized steel?
Yeah, it doesn't come with a, that's a lot of money.
As a taxpayer, I wouldn't presume, I'm sorry, but.
I would take a little extraordinary.
We'd have the same problem as we have now.
Do you want to postpone this item until the end of the meeting, and I can try to verify with Charles Vince or with Rachel Self?
Well, I think we can move forward.
We're all bringing it to Town Council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we can decide there. All right, any question? Oh, Council, you done Francine? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay. Council.
You can verify the quality of material.
Right.
Council Marquetti?
And, and once again, I keep bringing it up, but it's true that everything seems to be going to one park. Morris Street and other parts in town seem to be ignored. And I know that the answer is, well, we planned this all out, but that's the problem. It keeps getting planned out every year that I've been on the council, that everything goes to one park. And I've also asked how much CDBG money is available. I don't know if I'm getting a correct answer on that, or if they don't know. If Ms. Dean doesn't know, or whatever it is, I can't seem to get an answer on it. How much CDBG money do we have available right now? Have not been used. I know that sometimes the answer I guess it's been encumbered, but there's a lot of funds that are encumbered until they're not encumbered. So I would like an answer on that, and I'd also like to point out, Council Adams, you would like a transfer station. So we are going to need some CDBG money for a transfer station, so just remember that. Keep that in the back of your mind, that we're going to keep spending all the money on this one park. Are we going to save some of it for a transfer station, some of it for the other parks? It's just something that I would like us to keep in mind.
You got it. I'll pay attention to that. Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yeah, so I misspoke out of ignorance. I thought we had one point three-five million dollars available in the next application. Good news, we have one point six million. The downside, which I think I told everyone, is that the number of activities we're allowed to go for is limited. We can only go for three activities. We've asked for four to allow for one planning activity, and they're allowing us. So that planning activity will be for that Open Space Recreation Plan that will include Morris Street. So when, with regards to existing CDBG money, we apply for specific activities. We have to prove they are benefiting specific low-modern income residents. And then if we wanted to make an amendment to the grant, it would be its own process to ask for money to be moved when we're talked about. We will never want to see funds go unused. We would therefore ask for an amendment to move it if we have to. But otherwise, it's committed to the activities we apply for. So if I use the word encumbered, encumbered by definition is when you already create a purchase order and the money is obligated to a particular vendor, you know, and no, in this situation, it is committed to these other activities. We will be having another public hearing before the application that's scheduled potentially for the end of January. So I'll make sure that you're all aware of that. You could come at that time. You could advocate for use of funds for future grant opportunities. The next grant round after this one will be in the spring of twenty twenty-five.
All right, one year off.
Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
With all due respect, sometimes we have a lot of CDBG money that's committed to a project, and then some of it's left over, it doesn't get used, so it does get moved around a lot.
In my experience, that's never happened in the time that I've been hired. And I would like to clarify, I think this is an important point, just so all of you understand, I'm only following through on what was on the table or, or what I see as the obvious next steps. When I came to town, there was a master plan for McCann Fields to be redesigned that was paid for through CDBG for some three hundred thousand dollars. It was never followed through on, and in fact, we backtracked when we put in basketball court improvements because then we obligated ourselves to stick with the basketball courts rather than redoing the baseball fields to be what was designed into that. What we were told by CDBG is if you don't follow through on designs, they can come back for that money because you haven't fulfilled the purpose. And they have since actually changed their guidelines that say, if you go for a planning grant, we expect to see those followed through on within two years. And so I'm in good faith, trying to make sure the town isn't on the hook for another three hundred thousand dollars. And even though we're not doing the master plan for McCann Fields, we are improving it as a neighborhood park for, for the community. So that, that in, was the inception of going forward with some of these proposed McCann Fields improvements.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I got a question. The volleyball, still there?
Yes, and we would love to see someone take initiative with it.
Well, we tried last year, you know, I donate the, actually the the net, but they was having issues, losing the ball, go downhill. Is there any way you can put a fence there or something around that? Or no, that's too late?
I mean, it's a great suggestion. It's not, there's no funds available. That might be something you could consider through ARPA.
But that's still there, correct?
But the, the sand court is there, the net is not up.
Yeah, but, well, correct.
But the posts are there, and I've heard staff in town say they'd love to play volleyball. So, you know, it seems like something if you could get an interest.
There's a lot of people, but there's no place, like, we play, either me, I go to Charlton. There's no place here in the winter, too. You know, my, Council Marquetti have a plan, but I don't know, we used to play at Senior Center, but now I don't think they're allowed to play volleyball there for some reason. But thank you for the hard work.
Someone you could ruin it. Is that what you did? That's possible. All right, thank you, Council Dow. I, I will state that I, I know Ms. Dean has provided documentation and numbers to us before of how much it was gonna, how much CDBG money we've had. Do you want an update from nineteen, twenty, twenty-one? That's what you're looking for?
Wouldn't mind an update on how much money we spent up there.
Okay, I think you provided that before, haven't you?
I could be off a few million.
That's a possibility. But I will say is, all that money is voted on. We know where we're going.
Have you been up to Henry Street Field?
Absolutely, multiple times.
A million dollars have been spent up there? It doesn't look like it to me.
Well, if you look over the last, how many years there, Council Marquetti, since you have the numbers in front of you? I'm just asking. Do you have the numbers in front of you? How long has it been since we spent that million dollars?
Well, it started, I started, I went back to two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so from that period of time, yeah, absolutely. You can see a change in that place. I gotta beg to differ, but I don't want to get into semantics.
Fence that's ripped down and a, and a box that was set on fire and it's, it doesn't look like it's been repaired.
Well, that, so, so let me clarify one thing. The fence was done by prisoners at the cheap and no oversight whatsoever, and that's why it has to get done now, too. Because we did it the wrong way.
Yes.
The basketball courts, same thing, and we're always going to get the proverbial picture on, on whatever park you go to. You can go to Oxford, you can go here, you can go to the most pristine park in the world. You're always going to get it because of kids. And that's who they are. And I know it from being a kid playing on those streets and playing in those parks, and we mess it up all the time.
But I'm just offering you a fact.
Yeah.
That you've spent approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars to date on your upgrades, and that's what you're seeing. You've seen the small children's playground, and you're seeing the basketball court upgrades. None of the other money has been spent yet, except for what was most recently done to the skate park.
And it's the most used park in the town.
So it's all been, it's all been, it's all been committed for, and it's all going to come to fruition in the next break.
Looking forward to that slow track around Morris in the near future. Any other discussions so we can move on? Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Four zero. Thank you. All right, here we go. Number nine, discuss review change order number four to Jam Corporation, Corporation's contract for four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents, funded by the CDBG fiscal year twenty-one grant, and entertain a motion to the Town Council to approve, for approval and authorize Town Manager to sign all related documents. Okay? You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
This was work that we didn't expect to do. We could either ask E and E Systems, who's doing our camera systems, to hire a subcontractor to bury the conduit. We could do it in-house and hire someone, or we could ask the contractors Jam, who are up there, to do the work for us. They want the work on a low bid. I feel like it's a, it's just a gesture to be able to give them the work. It will probably come in cheaper than either of the other two options. It's under ten thousand. We don't need to go for three quotes. I would welcome us to just go ahead and accept their, their quote. And the reason we didn't know we would, we would need this is because there was an existing utility pole. Matt DeJardin was really the point person for this camera stuff. And so we were hoping it would, would all sort of work out the way we envisioned it. But now that we're getting into the weeds of the project, the wire's going to have to be chased down the concession stand and up to, you know, another pole, et cetera. Again, we don't talk about security at public meetings for, because it's an exemption under the open meeting law. But just vaguely, the place we thought we were going to be able to put it doesn't have power.
Okay. Council Marquetti? Absolutely. I, I do that every meet. I just already know. It's stuck in my head. You beat me down.
What else does the Construction Administration oversee for this project?
This doesn't, this is not included in the construction oversight for the park project. The park grant does not fund security, so one of the strategies, because we knew that vandalism, if we're going to invest in the park, we want to prevent vandalism, we want to make sure that we have a safe park, was to go for the security through the CDBG. And in order to keep the CDBG under, at this point, we weren't allowed to have projects over a hundred thousand dollars that didn't have full design. We, we were, we went out for this on our own, using our engineer on staff, and unfortunately, he's gone. Right, and, but the company we're working with are incredibly helpful. You know, they, again, they said, we could try to subcontract this for you, but we think that we can do it for cheaper through Jam and easier and faster because they're already on site.
So we voted to install the cameras last September, and now, we're just now finding out there's no power up there? And today, there was a fire up there at the press box. If we'd had security cameras installed up there, it might have made a difference, so. So I don't know why it's taken so long to install security cameras. And the other thing is, can't our own DPW dig a ditch? Like, to me, it's all that's needed, is to dig a ditch.
So Phil and I were the ones who had discussed what the best options were with the, with the SC Group, the construction oversight for the other projects. And we can't, unfortunately. We'd have to have, even if we could dig it, we'd have to haul a permit and have an electrician come out and bill us for the service. So at that point, you might as well just hire a contractor that's got an electrician.
Anything else? Anything else? All those in favor? All those in favor? Post, four zero. Ten, discuss review, change order number one, to extend the agreement with, I don't want to mess this up, Ugle LLC for commercial rehab at one eleven Central Street to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, entertain a motion to council for approval, authorize town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So, I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Yes, this is parallel to what we experienced with twenty-two hundred and a year ago. Basically, you know, we're coming up against weather, we were delayed by waiting for one eleven to be refinanced. And so we're hopeful that you can just allow us the extra month. Last town council meeting, you approved extending this grant out to February twenty-eighth to make sure we can spend down these funds completely. Asking Rapids Unlimited, they felt like it was a little too much pressure to guarantee the work by December thirty-first. If we can give them that wiggle room, that helps them tremendously.
Questions? Dean?
I guess I've got a couple. Is there a change of views in that building? Was it like office space was supposed to be upstairs, there's always been apartments above?
It, I don't know if it was offices upstairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
As I recall, it was always planned to be apartments.
It was always planned to be apartments?
I think so. I mean, even back to like hundred foot state, it was intended to be apartments.
I think, I think on Main Street, second floor, there was one office one time.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think that before the fire, it was fire, that was a long time ago there. And after that, it was still baking, not either finished construction, it was like beams, steel beams to hold the building and then another finish the construction there. I think the town helped to keep that building up.
It did.
Yeah.
Francie?
One eleven Central Street, that's right. There was a real estate office that had offices upstairs.
Correct.
In the suite. There was another insurance place there, the now Webster, they had offices upstairs. So it was, you know, they had, you know, like a conference room, whatever. I mean, they were, oh, don't get me wrong, it wasn't in the best shape. But I don't think there was apartment. But as long as I've lived here, I don't remember it being, I remember it being office space.
Thank you, we need our, we need a local historian here at every meeting, I tell you.
Sag it with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was trying to think of anything, but I couldn't.
Anything else? Thank you, Francie.
Is the restaurant gonna be opening soon, do you know? It sounded like there's gonna be a restaurant there.
That's probably a segue into the next agenda.
That's the next.
Oh, okay, all right.
Anything else? All those in favor? Post, four zero. All right. Number eleven, discuss review, entering into an agreement with Ugle LLC to provide a zero percent commercial improvement loan to install sprinklers at one eleven Central Street, helping trigger the occupancy of its restaurant using ARPA funds appropriated at the town council meeting on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Agenda item number forty-six, entertain a motion to council for approval and authorize town manager to sign all related documents.
So.
Thank you.
So.
Ms. Dean?
Yeah, no, I should probably speak on this first. So I just want to apologize for it taking so long to develop a commercial loan program. You approved these funds back in June. I slogged through with Mark Karen and Eric Ramsey, going back and forth about what type of program to design. They advocated hard for as business friendly as possible. I had to toe the line of the final rule. And in the end, we had to get town, we had to get town attorneys to finally help us with the final language. I think what we came up with was an incredibly business friendly approach. It allows us to keep our hands out of the project as much as possible. There's no prevailing wages, there's no procurement law involved. However, we do have to stay within a certain confine of the town qualified census tract to be able to qualify. And we also have to, we will lean the property. And so in the end, it's a simple application. I feel like it's a very fair loan program. And then thanks to Mark Karen, he's out there working with potential investors to see these monies put to good use. So, Francie?
No, it takes two guys to take, you know, to fall in the sword. But I think it took some time, some deliberation through all these deliberate, emotional sometimes conversations we came up by, I think is maybe one of the best uses for these funds. Some of the arguments could have gone different routes, the town could have gone different routes and could have just, you know, given money to certain entities so that they could parcel it out. We wanted to make sure that this was something that would show its value in the out years and those who benefited from it upon their repayment would also be, provide benefactors to those who are looking at projects in years to come. So I think we did a nice job. This particular application, it helps us perpetuate the project and have and be an accelerant to occupancy in the diner particularly. It's funny, as we're sitting here, forgive me, you know, because I'm not really a Facebook person at all or social media, but one of the gentlemen who is partnered with the restaurant that is looking occupied is on the Food Network as we speak. So he's a talent, he's well-known, that shouldn't, that should not enter into any of this because it's a construction piece. I'm just letting you know what your wisdom and the outlet of these funds are doing right now and our efforts down in the office to start attracting business talent and that kind of activity that we're looking occupied with spaces, which are way too underutilized and vacant.
Thank you. Counselor Steve?
It sounds like it's gone a long way into our being a good idea. One concern I have is that it also sounds kind of like what you're essentially doing is creating a revolving fund. Yeah. Well, we have to legally put that in the pilots.
If I may through you, Counselor Adams. We'll have to ask Karen about that, but we have not revolved any of the funds yet. And you still will have time when you go to do the budget to be able to add that within your list of the revolving funds because we're releasing it and then they have one year to pay it back.
Right.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's a really good point.
So when you, so these loans, and so because if I heard Mark's instructions, the plan is that this basically will, that when you all pays back, you will be able to pay it forward to the next client.
Correct.
It means, will all of the, so all of these loans have just a one-year payback period?
Yeah.
Or will they be extended, depending on the loan and?
I'm sorry, there's a, if I might.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Do you mind?
Yeah, no, I don't mind at all.
It's been a loss of information. It's a one-year delay in payment so that the funds can actually go towards the construction and the application. And then it allows that, once it's in, gives them sometimes to generate revenue within the space and then they start paying it back. And then we have had a seven-year repayment. So it's actually an eight-year repayment, so it's slow. But obviously, it's, now there's a lot of motivation for anybody to pay it back early, except for Goodwill and maybe their efforts going forward to retire that and get the lien off the property. Yes, but to your point.
So I have a question, I just, I need to know. Would, would the terms of the actual loan agreement have to come with the council for approval?
So I.
This is essentially putting the town in a contract with some, with a private entity.
So if I may through you.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's similar to other motions. I enter into service agreements without you reviewing the service agreements. You approve entering into the service agreement, but I don't necessarily bring the service agreement forward for you to review and approve. There are times when I do, but I don't sometimes.
Well, and that's true, and I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, because if, I'm thinking that is, that, and I don't want to, I don't want to like make it harder for you to do your job because it sounds like a good thing. I just want to clarify that we have, that we know that we're all, kind of all on the same page when it comes to, the town is committing itself to these various contract requirements, basically in perpetuity for a whole slew of different clients that may in the future use it. And we have no idea what the wording is.
If you'd like.
And we want to make sure, you know, we kind of want to make sure that when we approve it, it is, it's a consistent wording and that, you know, that we know, as, since it is ultimately public funds that's being used for it, since it came from ARPA money originally, we also need to be able to account for where the money ultimately goes. That's my topic.
It's something I, and I think you could work this out, but if you're approving this initial nine-year-old loan to these folks, when that money comes back in, then anybody applies. I think maybe you would then at least want to see who the next applicant is seeking.
Oh, absolutely. But I think that we need the terminology from the, from the actual loan agreement as a, as a contract between the town and whomever decides to be the applicant.
And I would think you would want to make sure it's a worthwhile endeavor, that's in the best interest of the community, so.
I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that PEG doesn't have a good idea of trying to, trying to pick out people that would be worthwhile endeavors. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that, I'm just thinking in terms of the technicalities of the language of the fact that, that we did as, when the council approved the funding, and I don't have a comment with you guys negotiating an agreement. It's just that most, any other kind of agreements that we would have had negotiated by town staff would come after the council for approval.
If I may through you.
Yes.
Especially if they're gonna be promoting.
Every, every applicant will come before you for approval. You were provided the application that they submitted, which I was hoping you would review for the details of the, of the project to ensure that you agree that this is in line with the amount of funds being asked. The only thing I haven't provided, as you said, is the legal service contract. I can bring that to town council. It's just of the many things I'm doing, right? This has taken me a lot to dig through the final rule and determine with the attorneys what is allowable. I'm excited that I've gotten to this point. I told Mark that he's, he's welcome to be the person that, you know, vets the applications as they come in, but up until now, it's really been a big burden on.
Oh, I'm sure.
And so I apologize, I wish I could have come to you with also the contract. We want to get this through as quick as possible, time is of the essence. I know for the McCarthys, to the point about whether the diner's gonna open, they are alleging that this will trigger the diner to be able to open and that without it, they will continue to struggle for the next few months. So I really was trying to get this to Counselor Adams as quickly as possible while juggling all the many other things.
No, I totally appreciate all the questions, trust me. And I completely agree with you that, I mean, I want to see this, I want to see this. I just want to make sure that we, that we do it right.
No, I think your point is well taken.
Yes.
And I would just say that it's a nice thing, a good problem to have, I think, that we're able to do something. And I, but, but what you're talking about is something, you know, I even asked the question with Ms. Dean, I said, we provided you these funds, do we have to approve these? I mean, these are something, this is brand new to us.
Exactly.
So I think it's a great idea with those questions and as we move along, policy set in place if that, if you have a revolving fund that's going through and how that policy's gonna shape. And I think everybody's gonna be a little different here and there, obviously. But I think they're good points, though.
My point is that if it's a revolving fund, it has to be in the pilots by now.
Yeah, and we're all used to, we didn't even know if we could do a revolving fund until lawyers got involved and everybody else because those funds have to be utilized by twenty twenty-six. And so how do we have this great problem and how do we keep the funds to, at the same time, help small businesses, our businesses?
That is weird, that is weird.
Yeah.
Could I offer a little, a little piece of insight on that? The attorneys shared that if we do this without doing grants, because I assume this is gonna come up at the town council meeting from probably Council Rivas or whomever, there was, there was advocacy for us to create some grants within this. If we were to do that, that would end up causing us to report that money in a different way and it would potentially complicate spending the funds down. Doing the zero loan program was the easiest way for us to be able to use these funds. And we were allowed to have it fall under what's called the lost revenue category versus the, what, you know, your all other categories for emergency or for COVID relief, all that. Right, so under this lost revenue category, once we spend the funds for the first loan, it's considered obligated forever. So the revolving loan fund doesn't become part of your continued ARPA reporting that we have to circulate back out soon enough to spend the money down by twenty twenty-six. That's why we were able to build out a program that's seven years of payback. And so all, I mean, I feel like the stars aligned for us in some ways for this program. And the, I just lost my track. But so with that, oh, the oversight you're concerned about, yes, of course, you're committing yourselves to service contracts, but you have your ARPA administrator, Abby Theverge, who's gonna be responsible in the first few years, at least for tracking all of these initial, the initial loans, the obligations. And hopefully, by the time she's done, will have obligated all the initial funds.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. I'm just saying that in the long term, this, because this is a unique way of doing it. And I think it's a great idea to do it. Ultimately, though, it will fall back on the council as well. And that'll happen long after I'm off the case, but.
Good points taken.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Steve? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. Number one, if you sold the building before the loan was paid back, do you have to pay it before, or it will transfer to the new owner?
Yes, so I could give examples. I'm aware of people who are potentially interested in selling their buildings, but that might, you know, apply for these funds. We would, the second we release, unlike the hundred foot situation where we did not leave the property immediately, the second we release these funds, I'm at the, you know, the registry of deeds, putting that lien on the building so that the existing owner, if they were to sell, has to pay us back. And then the, and then that's it, it's released. We're no longer obligated. And that's great because it comes back to our coffers that quicker, that quicker, and we turn it back around into the community. If they don't sell, it stays with the, with the property for as long as they, they.
Seven years.
Yeah.
Another question. Where the payment will make, to the town hall, somewhere here, or the special account bank? Who handles the financing regarding the payment of the loan? How, how will it be addressed, by who?
It comes back to our ARPA administrator, to town hall.
So will be like a special office to collect those money or just?
We already have an ARPA administrator. Most payments come in somehow through the treasure collector's office and then would be deferred to the ARPA administrator and they would account for it.
And if no payment was made, any action will be taken against the owners or the buildings or?
I hate this question.
Go ahead, Ms. Dean, no, it's, it's been asked.
I have a good question, it was Mark's first question. And we have no default mechanism except for the lien on the building. And so there may be situations where we have to wait thirty-five years to get the money back that we loaned, but we'll have the lien out there. And to be clear, this is not a deferred payment loan that gets forgiven over time. This is a loan program they pay back no other way.
If any way we can put, like if he tried, whatever applied for the loan, he's not making the payment or up to date, he can't get a permit, he can't, like, everybody else, you know, you don't pay your tax. It will be held on a permit, on, if it's new, a new person wanna come and rent the second store or whatever, we wouldn't issue any license to continue business as well, you know, he's not making a payment. And if he up to date on a payment, then you release whatever license? I mean, that should be something to be able to continue. If you want to get that money in and move it to the second person, continue rolling and help other businesses in town, that should be some in the policy somewhere. You can't renew your license, the business license. I know it's not, the tenant's fault, but the town should step in and say, give me the rent. That's your payment.
Agreed.
Like.
Agreed.
I don't know if that.
The town manager for that question, I think it's a great suggestion and I hope that we can lump it in with taxes and fees that they're obligated to pay in order to get licenses, permits, et cetera. But I'm not sure, so I guess.
Or collect the rent, the town collect the rent to, for the payment, like it should be like on a lease or on the loan papers, if you. be like on a lease or on a, on the loan papers, if you fail to do a payment, the town allow to go collect the rent, uh, somewhere to protect the town, you know, why you want to wait 10 years and he's collecting money, uh, you know, taking rent, whatever, and living his life and here we can't help the second person coming forward, you need to, you know, he need help.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Francie.
I didn't really ask. Well, through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, I wasn't part of the discussions that we had with council on this, creating this particular thing, but traditionally, I used to do real estate law 20 years ago. You'd get a note in a mortgage that would allow you a lot of those things to take control, foreclose, you know, step in, collect rents. There are mechanisms to do it, I just don't know if it was contemplated in this, because, you know, it's another step.
Because.
No, keep going.
Because you know, when, uh, when the bank have the first, uh, lien on a property, he will sell it in the auction and if F is money left to give the town, well, town got paid, if not, sooner or later it's done.
You always, you take second seat to the primary merchant.
But at least if there's any way you can put on that, if he failed to make the payment, he can, you know, cushion it with the first lieners, uh, getting some rent or whatever, I don't know if that.
Well, just something worth looking into. More to follow up on.
We need to phrase it in such a way that we don't penalize any of the tenants in the process, because their businesses are independent from the landlord's business.
Francie.
Um, years ago, I don't know if you want to model this based on history, but years ago, where the fire was on Main Street, there were signs, they entered into an agreement with the town for custom signage at the front of their store. I think there were more than one. But that particular business, it spurred them to do renovations within the business itself. So, you know, it's a hairdressing place, but it made it much more pleasant to go in there, you know, as a customer. But my question is, that building caught fire, okay? So in this agreement, now these, this landlord or these tenants had a business, they have a signage on the front of their building that they entered into an agreement, I want to say 2012, maybe a little bit prior, okay, that was the same, I think it was the same length of time, seven or eight years, had they paid it all back before the fire. Did the insurance from the fire, which was the property owner's insurance, because the hairdresser's place didn't get much for insurance, how do we as the town get money, get the money back if the loan is not paid for and they have a fire? Or, or it came, or whatever.
Ms. Dean.
Yeah, so I, I don't want you to be nervous that I'm coming from nothing. We will base the agreements on the existing commercial rehab program that we do have, which requires that the property carry insurance, but know that the existing commercial rehab program we have was incredibly lenient, it was only a five-year long window, and then after five years, it's forgiven. And so if, if we lost money in those situations, we probably wrote it off because we were trying to bolster economic development. In some cases, you just have to weigh how, how much is it worth going after your money versus it was intended to be a grant after five years anyway, we're just going to let it go. In the situation where you're talking about taking action, one of the things I'm often calculating in my head is, do we have attorney fees to be able to take action? You know, if there's some way we can say, no permits, no, uh, no, no permits or licenses if you're not paying, that seems to make sense to me. But when you start to incur legal fees to go after money, I'm not sure, you know, at what point is it, do we decide to do that?
Cost analysis.
Yeah. So that, that's what I'm calculating my brain and I'll do my best between now and Monday night to come up with what we would be proposing to the McCarthys.
Thank you. Francie, you all set?
So a business in our sense, a business such as that hairdressing would be paying personal property tax, same thing. If that business wants a permit or whatever, how they pay current with their personal property tax, it's not just real estate tax.
Right.
It's personal property taxes, you know, are they filing their annual forms, are they, you know, so.
That's a good point.
There's ways to not incur legal fees, I agree with Council, Council Dow. There is ways to put some restrictions on it so that we're not incurring legal, you know, legal fees if it bellies up and they don't pay it, but yet you can say, okay, you're, you're entering this agreement, but you have to keep your taxes current, your, you know, if you want permits or, you know, then, right, but it's not just real estate permits.
Thank you.
Or in this annual forms that they have to fill out. So if that's not submitted, that's another way to say, hey, now.
Thank you. Uh, Roland.
Quickly, uh, just a thought. This loan is coming into this property way into the involved rental of this property. The property owner has spent a lot of money and time up to this point. And I think that will, that would show that he or she has, is vested in making it work. The thing that puts shit is down my spine is the previous landlord that you spoke of. Um, perhaps if the loan is given out after a substantial show of good faith and money put into it.
We're not allowed.
You're not allowed?
If I may through you, the second we start overseeing invoices and payments, we're considered procurement and then it just triggers prevailing wages and following the, you know, the quotes or big process and we are inserting ourselves and, and becoming cumbersome.
But could you look at it, if you, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Keep going, please.
If you could look, not, not really doing it audit, but anybody to see how much work's done on that building? Just to show that there's a good faith intent to make this venture work versus, hi, the building is building, these are my ideas, I'd like to get a zero interest loan. That's my thought, because we can see what he put into it. If he's going to walk away from it, he's walking away from what? Cash. The last gentleman walked away, and I'm going to stop there. But I think if it was something like that, that.
Thanks, Francie.
One third through your, you know, one third or, or 20% through your project, you will be allowed to look at this and we're here to help you. But you've got to show the community, the taxpayer, that you're really working hard to make it work. And that might solve a lot of worries of like Council Dow say, if somebody walks away and goes bankrupt, town's going to lose them all, we know that, because we're the last predator. I don't know.
This, uh, I know we've got people that.
Just a thought.
No, I, I, they're great questions, but I just want to move along. But Ms. Dean and then, uh, Council Steve.
One of the things we probably all don't like about public funds is taking risks, but it's, uh, you know, in my own leisure time, I'm reading books about how do we trigger economic development and change in communities, in, in, you know, our local economies and all these things. Oftentimes, it takes the government taking risks. And I feel like in this situation, there is a level of risk that we have to be willing to take. I think the town council talked about it, I think the town manager kind of prefaced when we were talking about the idea of going forward with consultants not knowing whether we were going to get potential future grants, right? That idea of we were taking risks in, in the end, that we could take advantage of these discretionary funds.
Thank you. Yeah. Council Steve.
Just to follow up on Roland said, maybe, I mean, I, I agree with what, what PEG just said. I think maybe the basic gist of what you're asking for is, um, if we, we don't want to get involved in auditing, as PEG mentioned, and that kind of stuff, but, um, we would have the track record of building permits and there, if it had gone through the planning board and all that, so all of that documentation is here in town. You know, if they've done all of that work, that's, that's a significant investment right there. You know, and that could give us, again, that would give us some idea of whether they're actually trying to do the job. If they've actually bothered to go forward, the formal process of saying, oh, this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing it. No, what do you think?
Ms. Dean.
Unfortunately, so we had the loan program design approved by our attorneys as is, and it's very clear that we can't get involved in oversight of the project. That starts to feel like we're inserting ourselves. Uh, and so we don't want to find ourselves in five years being audited, told that we have to pay back money, that we're still waiting to be paid back from these other people. Um, I would, I would say we are on, in some way, we are allowing a level of trust that yes, in certain situations, if this fails, we, we will only be paid back when they sell the building, but we have to hope for the best. Um, and they have to provide sound, um, quotes. They are people we know in the community, thankfully, and so they can stand on their reputations and they can stand on the work that they're all going to do potentially, you know? Uh, we have, we have a proposed, we have a potential applicant that's one of the larger property owners in town, you know, you can have faith that someone like that is trustworthy. So, you know, it's hopefully, uh, going to, it's hopefully worth the risk.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Aaron, go ahead.
Very quickly, and not to prolong, and these are all very valid. Let's not lose sight of where these funds come from and what their intent was. It was to be expended. You have allocated on your wisdom to other organizations to then distribute to accomplish those goals. What we've established here, again, with your wisdom, is to outlay that cash. What we're talking about for the most part is the repayment element vehicle when it comes back and how do we become fair to everybody who's looking for that kind of outlay? So this is really, um, these are one-time funds. I don't think any town in the United States is looking for ARPA money to be coming from the next disaster. These are one-time funds. Many towns, many municipalities have looked to, uh, output these funds based on capital expenditures so they could prolong the value of, and recognize value of those outlays correctly. This is in that kind of intent. It's to facilitate buildings with the infrastructure to, um, promote and perpetuate occupancy for certain industry synergies. We're going to do that. Our conversation, all right, is how do we police the return of those funds? Because we're going to see, we want to see continued value of the initial money in the out years and for other projects. It's all warranted, but I think, you know, for, for this particular purpose and the outlay of these funds, which you entrusted to us, um, is, we're reviewing those applications and those individuals 100%. Great, I mean, there are some cities, quite frankly, a city's sprinkle is one. Again, I do not want to prolong this, because if we're out of yes, I should just stop talking. It's a little burning agitty, I got rest and soul. The same is, uh, they awarded, uh, don't, don't take me to all these, but to a particular developer, so he could finish a building that he took on, which is going to eliminate some blight in a particular neighborhood, a rental, gifted, and he's internally grateful, but it, there's no, in this case, which is the wrinkle we added, which goes to somebody else. So it doesn't mean anything, I just want to kind of put it into perspective. It's an outlay of cash that are coming in so we could, uh, address the, we could mitigate the effects of the pandemic, we're doing that, and we're seeing some, because of the print, uh, the pieces and the particulars, the tendencies of these agreements with, uh, what PEG's put in, we're going to see some value in the out years. Our neighbors are going to be helping our neighbors, which is a wonderful, one of the scenarios. But no, thank you.
No, I, I think they're valuable questions that are being asked. It's the first time we've gone through this process, so I'm looking forward to seeing some answers and we'll move along and think we'll get a better feel as we move along. I appreciate all the hard work you guys have done as well, uh, on this whole thing. All right, uh, any other questions? All is a favor? Pose or zero?
I'm late.
All right, Zen, I have number 12, discuss review, request to apply for $20,000 for the micro projects program to fund a marketing campaign to educate South Ridge residents on our existing community transportation resources, entertain a motion to the town council for approval and to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. So, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Uh, you can speak to this, right? Do you want to, actually?
Do I? Do you feel like you're tired over there? So I attended a, I believe it was a CMNPO meeting, um, where they discussed certain things about our WRTA, um, within our, uh, communities. And so what I took from that was, you know, uh, public transportation from the senior centers, uh, mostly the senior centers, community centers throughout the towns themselves, and how do we get the information flow out there? Can we apply for funds for a senior bus or something like that, WRTA that would run it? Um, Oxford has, I think, two WRTA buses that run from the senior center. And there's a lot of transportation that takes place with those. I'm making sure, because I know, I know, uh, Ms. Dean's, uh, track record, she'll, she'll let me know as soon as I'm wrong somewhere. So I'm ready to pounce. So we, I, I sent an email to Ms. Dean, I believe Eric, um, and Pat Haddock over at the senior center. Uh, senior center, uh, was quick to respond, um, they didn't have enough people, budgets and all that kind of stuff. Anyways, we set, Ms. Dean set up a meeting for us to listen into the CMNPO as part of CMRPC, um, and WRTA as well. And they advised us on certain things, you know, like, um, do we, when we kind of gave our spill, like, we'd like to have some, maybe a senior bus or, you know, to help the seniors or locals around here boot back and forth, they actually said, you know, they looked into our history, what we have, they said, you really don't need a bus, you already have plenty of transportation in this community. Problem is, you, you don't communicate. That's, that's the great point. Where? Because we don't know. We don't, we're not educated on it. So they said, you have so much transportation within the community because of the type of community you are, that you really don't need this. Maybe later on, that'd be great, but let's try this method first. And this, I believe, Ms. Dean has probably had more of a conversation with them since then, because I didn't get any information after that, probably the most important person in the room was her. So they probably sent her something, and this is where she came up with $20,000 for the marketing. So, did they do all right?
Yeah, we were giving an example budget, $45,000 for another town that's a, you know, um, triple R size, and so we scaled this down to the, the $20,000 budget. Should we not use all the funds? We can always turn it back. I consulted with Mark Karen, who's had experience in the printing world, on what kind of mailers we could get out there, billboards, you know, things like that, and this seemed like a fair number. Uh, again, the, the grant's focus was community transportation. And so, you know, Council Adams was great about kind of asking about all things, like, could this help with the, the absence of family services to be able to transport people? Could this help with, um, potential, uh, QCC students up at the middle school back into town? Could this help with, um, there was another, um, oh, it was, um, Quevedo Valley CDC, you know, wants to see transportation to and from. And so, again, this will start the, the communications part, and then in the meantime, they've already started the conversation with this contracted service, Elder Bus and Ready Bus, to see if they can start to increase the service hours and improve the services to the town in the future. But right now, they're absent an executive director and don't have the capacity to think about, um, improving our services. So this is a great first step.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that point up, because Family Health Center Worcester obviously left. They say they have a contract with a, a busing system. I don't even think it's on the website yet. So it is, uh, something that helps us with being able to move from a hospital to RMG to some other places that we have as well within town. Um, I do know we talked about QCC, they were going to look at putting some type of, um, lounge for the, the adult learners, uh, down Main Street or somewhere within the community. Uh, and that'd be one area that they can drop people off to, um, you know, this is a walking town, so everybody, this, this gives us a little bit more, uh, play. And again, this is really the education piece of the, the whole process is, we didn't know, I didn't know, I had no idea. I mean, I think Michael does the WRTA once a month meetings, uh, we're about to appoint another person into that, that area, uh, as a delegate and, you know, I think it would be good for us to, to pay attention to that and see what we can do before we move on to maybe bigger and better things when adding an extra bus in, into the town where our senior center, hopefully one day, will be able to move our seniors, aging population in town from A to B. Questions? Sir?
Um, you know, what about, um, what about like the outskirts of town? Because it, I don't know what's available as far as, I know, I know you can like call up for a senior bus, but if you're not, if you're not a senior, what's available out there for people who live in the outskirts or who don't have cars or whatever, and they're just, they're not downtown, they're not walking distance?
Ms. Dean can probably explain it better, but I think this is the educational part. This is where we're finding out what we can do, especially with the ADA compliance, uh, that, that so many people need. Um, so I think this, outside of our community, our town lines, so this will help educate us as well, um, as we move forward.
The memo that was provided had a quick little blurb of what I was taking notes on for the routes that we have. I don't see for people under 60, but I do see for people over 60, um, there are on-call services. So you've got the ones for the, the paratransit, for those who are stable, and then for those who are over 60. So again, this is for us to, to educate everyone on what's out there. And then as we start to learn what gaps there are, then like Councilor Adams said, maybe that's a key project.
Would this include like private services, taxis and, and the various other, um, what's the word I want?
Ubers, Milan, stuff like that? I don't think this really has anything to do with that. It's all the Moran, uh, projects, uh, or transportation.
If it's considered community transportation. So we need to find out from them what the definition is to figure out what we can advertise.
But didn't they bring up also, they, they brought up that they were looking into some numbers for us about if they're a younger age, could they apply? Or could they, could they tweak it a little bit for us within our community?
And that's what will be that future conversation once the executive director comes up.
Hope that is the answer. Uh, Councilor Mark, in?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, you might want to mention the agenda there is, I think there's a 20% match on this grant. I thought I read it in, in your memo somewhere. So I just thought maybe it'd be something that we mentioned in there and, uh...
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
I thought there was a 20% match.
Oh, you're right.
And where it would come from, it's not really much, I would just think that's the one and only that's going to come from.
Thank you.
The other thing is, um, I think a lot of seniors, seniors, they, they know about the buses. I think what would be a good idea about it is like I see in other communities, larger communities, they actually have a bus group, a sign posted around, so you know where the bus is going to stop, where it's going. I don't think we have any.
You don't think, I, I thought we did, but maybe I'm, I, I'd have to look.
That should be part of this goal.
Yeah, part of this funding. That's a good point about the 20% match, and I guess we did do some search, but I think that had to do with, um, boy, we, I know it's right here. The congestion mitigation and air quality, if they provided a bus to us, I think that's how it was, it worked. But it, it could be a 20% match for just this grant money, the marketing. But I don't know, she never even mentioned anything like that.
Maybe it's, maybe it's known.
It does say proponents should anticipate providing a 20% location.
Okay. Well, then we could always...
We only cover 80% of the project's capital line, three of the funds.
If it's a one-time deal, we could do it through ARPA. Yeah. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Post or zero? We're going back to number five. Discuss review no-cost service agreement for installation of a new power meter at the R and V for the purposes of installing electric vehicle charging stations. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval and authorize town manager to sign all related documents. Thank you. Okay. Confused me.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Eric.
Long story short, this was, um, a contract that's necessary for us to fill the EVIP grant requirements, which is the, uh, electric vehicle incentive program, which council had approved a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago or so.
That was your question.
And the, the, long story short is that when we went out and did surveys of all the potential locations, power was a major issue. We didn't have enough power at the fire station for us to put, uh, chargers there. We didn't have enough power at R and V to put chargers there. We did have plenty of power at the library, but we would have to rebuild the parking lot.
Between the two of them.
Which, yes, is, uh, is, is good. So, long story short, we also had staff who was not in favor of adding more utilities to the town's role. And at this point in time, we're trying again to add a meter necessary to put in charging stations.
Okay. And this is just at the R and V area?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I understand you don't have enough power in certain places. How hard to bring power in? And either, either we say we're going to bring some to the Lexis, the police station here on the common.
The common, the common's all set, so we will be, you know, that should be, that, you know, that has the power there.
After we, you know, public meeting, council approved and all these stuffs, one employee, he doesn't feel or she doesn't feel it's necessary or doesn't want to. I, I, I'm not sure if it was one person, he can make a, he can break the decision of nine. Council was elected by the people from town, 17,000 people. One employee, and I'm not sure if that employee, uh, let's, let's not go too far. But, you know, we get a lot of... I, I believe we have a lot of, you know, I, I don't want to... I respect that opinion, but I don't think we should do what they say. Because, you know, we went through meeting, we went through review, we went through a vote. And I don't think that's correct because if it's that employee got, uh, you know, okay, make their opinion and we got to do, how about other employees? So let's, let's resign all of us and people not vote and let the employee make decisions. And this is the problem we have. Every time you try to, uh, do something or prove something or, or try to, uh, help something, you know, and one employee refuses and now we have to deal with all kinds of stuffs. And I think that's wrong. I think, I think we vote, we should go for it regardless of why they didn't come to the meeting, why they didn't say the opinion there. I think it's wrong. I understand where it comes from, but I don't think we should back up on, on, on what we vote on.
Sure. Well, so we're, we're here now, um, with a, a new proposal for a new drop and, and, uh, you know, four charging stations.
Very well, thank you, thank you. Do you have? You're all set? Councilor Mark, in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I remember when we took this vote in February 2021, we had four areas, four spots, Town Common, Elm Street Parking Lot, behind the library and the R and V. And I think the R and V is a great place to have these, and I'm counting in favor of it. I'm glad we did it at the Town Common. Common is good, so I think we should proceed with that. I think the behind the library is also an excellent spot, it's downtown. I agree with Councilor Dom. We voted on that and I think it's a great spot to put an electric charging station. I don't know why they wouldn't want to, want a lot of people in there. I mean, electric cars are a great thing.
The issue was not, was not the, was not wanting to not put it there. The issue was that in order to meet the requirements of the grant, we'd have to rebuild that parking lot. So we were looking at to, when are we rebuilding this parking lot? And I never got a firm answer. And now...
There are changes going on.
Now things are changing.
Elm Street Parking Lot.
Elm Street Parking Lot, so we did, um, we did the light conversion to LEDs. So there's potential that we might be able to tap into a light pole to put a charging station there. We're still looking into that, trying to get the company back out to do an evaluation of the electrical. And that will make the determination from there whether we want to add another.
So we are still planning on four drops.
In, yes.
Ms. Dean and then I'll get...
Yeah, in Eric's defense, uh, similar to when we work with these energy companies on other projects, a lot of it is our level of ignorance on what questions to ask and how to figure out how to get these projects done. Uh, for instance, we had no idea that we would be able to get power into the R and V so easily until we started asking other questions like, well, what about putting in a carport, a solar carport, which would have cost tons of money, but we thought, well, if we're doing the tip project, is this another avenue to go? And it was at that point that someone said, oh, wait, we could get your power in there. And so, you know, a lot of this is your sort of hunting and pecking for the right solutions, but you may not know what they are. Um, and unfortunately, with the staff turnover, I think that kind of drags things up a little bit.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Marshall?
Is the, is the use going to be paid by the user? Credit card or?
Yes.
Okay. So here's my question as a licensed electrician, because reading this, I got confused. You're talking about installing a electrical service to feed full power off of?
Yes.
Okay. That I will tell you makes 100% sense. The way it's written is a new power meter, the general public's going to question you to the hill. You want to drop a electrical service to power four units that will be paid by the user. So therefore, the infrastructure is made by the town, doesn't cost anybody to use it. You want to charge your car, you put in your card. This is a win-win. And I understand if you're going to drop 450M, 240 volt chargers, the Old Depot is not going to handle it.
Correct.
That's why you're putting in a separate service?
Yes.
Just like the service that drops that had building board right behind it.
Correct.
And that makes sense. So maybe, I don't know, to just, so that you can explain this?
You want to go to council on Monday and not maybe?
You bringing a coffee?
If you need it, sure.
But I mean, that, that, that makes 100% sense. Because, yeah, I, you know, I know that building and you're adding about 100M service minimum.
Yes.
So if that, what's there is not going to haul. So you're adding one. Perfect.
And I'll talk offline about the one that town hall. You know, we talked about that too. But that's not this, uh, agenda item. All right, any other questions? All those in favor? Post? And number six, discuss review the expression of interest for the fiscal year 24 municipal vulnerability preparedness or MVP action grant for a study to be conducted, uh, which coincides with the top priority action in the final report from Bills and Thomas to evaluate the capacity of drainage, infrastructure and roadways and improve the capacity, equipment and resources of the municipal separate storm sewer system. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval and authorize town manager to sign all related documents.
Second?
Uh, Mr. Ramsey?
Sure, so this is, um, basically asking permission to apply for the expression of interest and then we'll come back to you, um, you know, once we get some ideas from the state on actually applying for the action grant through the MVP process to conduct a study of our storm sewer to see where deficiencies are and what upgrades should be recommended, um, for future projects.
Okay. A quick question, on the $20 million fiscal year 24, is that, is that overall or is that for everywhere? When I look at anticipated amount of grant funding to be awarded?
It's everywhere.
So that's everywhere.
That's everywhere?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, questions? Councilor Mark, in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. In 2021, council voted this same grant in municipal vulnerability program planning, which included community resiliency planning process. And there were 72 individuals that participated in this two, uh, two, four hour workshop. I think Councilor Steve was there, but it was several other people.
Councilor Eavis?
And at this workshop, they were formed, among many other things that the group worked on was to develop prioritized actions for the community. And they suggested specific actions. And they made recommendations, high priority actions, moderate priority actions, lower priority actions. I was reading it today. So I don't understand what this is. Is this a study to study the study?
No, this is a study of our... This is a...
But you already recommended the actions.
So what this, this is, this is taking the action.
Okay, 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 okay. I'll protect it for once. Yeah, okay. Eric, please. I got it.
This is to evaluate where in our storm sewer system, where the deficiencies are, specifically in environmental justice areas and so, you know, most of downtown.
And this, this group did not identify those?
This group identified, so it was a general state to say, the need of the town is, yes, our sewer, our storm water system is, um, undersized and overtaxed.
And 100 years old.
And 100 years old. So this is looking at that more, more specifically to say, okay, Dresser Hill or, or, uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dresser Hill.
Dresser Hill, Marcy Street, you know, the pipe size is 12 inch, really it should be 18. So it would be making those kind of recommendations so that later on, when we go for actual...
To get the, the action grant, we have to do those exercises and identify the general needs within the town. You know, we talked about deforestation and different things, a whole lot of things, but nothing specific.
Right, just to find out the specifics.
So then, can any of this type of grant, can it be used to hire somebody as a stormwater, uh...
And that's more expert?
Yeah, can it be used up there? I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Uh, I don't know, I'm not sure. I don't believe so. I think this is more for, because it's an action grant, it would be to, so it's either to conduct a study of something that's specifically spelled out in your report or it's to fund a project based upon the study that came out of your report.
You okay?
I'm good.
Need medical attention? Defensible stuff that's downstairs. We can take care of that, plenty of advantages. Any other, any other questions? All those in favor? Post or zero? Motion to adjourn? Okay? All those in favor? Post? All right.